Fourth time for the Hillsborough School District. And down there. First item today is a presentation about extracurricular activities. And Brian, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, I'm just going to introduce Brian Petrick. For those of you who don't know him, our Director of Extracurricular Programs. Brian has been as a product of Hillsborough School District and served in our district for a number of years. Additionally, has served at each level of our district, elementary, middle and high school. Also coached in our district and of course, the whole family has been involved in our district. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to give us an overview of the things that he was working on. Brian.
Thank you, Casey. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and be able to speak a little bit about extracurriculars and the importance of extracurriculars and what we're doing to try to make sure that kids are connected in the Hillsborough School District. I must say that I have to fast for 24 hours and I have not eaten since last night. So the fact that all of you are eating right now is driving me crazy. See me start to twitch, it's because of that. So at any rate, you know, my mission is really to help kids be connected in the school district and particularly with extracurriculars. We know that extracurriculars are really important for kids. It gives them a way to feel like they have a family within a family at their school and obviously provides them with a ton of social emotional development and a lot of peer relationship stuff that is critical. And so my mantra is always every kid, every year, group, club, team. Essentially, you know, that's what if we could, you know, draw out a perfect scenario, it would be that every kid, you know, was connected with some type of group or activity at their school, at least once in a year. Rose, are you running that? Go ahead and go ahead.
I just say next and.
Yeah, just say next.
Next, okay, thank you. There you are, Rose. So really, I've just come back into this role after a two-year hiatus. And so earlier this year, I went around to elementary school principals and I asked them the question, are extracurricular programs valued, you know, by your community? And some of the quoted words down there are words that they use with me when they express the importance of extracurriculars at their school. And some of those, you know, words are things like waitlist. Just because when we offer things at the school, there are so many kids that want to sign up that oftentimes we can't serve them all. And so there's an extreme interest out there among parents in the community to be involved with things like arts, athletics, STEM, you know, academics, supports or enrichment, social or cultural or leadership, you know, types of extracurriculars, which is awesome. Next, Rose.
It's a chair behind you, but it's all good.
What's up?
Chair behind you, Brian.
So the question really is, is how do we make a system that is inherently inequitable, accessible to more students? And let's go ahead, let's go next to the next slide. So over time, over decades, we've seen that a lot of extracurricular opportunities have kind of veered away from our school system. There's a lot of great organizations that are out there in our community that serve a lot of kids. Unfortunately, not all of our kids can access those organizations because they've become very, very expensive. And so for some of our students, you know, being involved on a team, you know, or with some type of organization that they want to be involved with is not really an opportunity that they can afford, you know, number one. And then also transportation, you know, is an issue. So our goal here is to try to provide more onsite opportunities for kids with extracurriculars in our school district. And I'm excited about the opportunity to do so. Can we go next on the slide? So this is just a slide to show, you know, that it would, our, our goal would be is, can we do things at the elementary school level that help get kids and families kind of in the know and aware about activities that are available to them? Can we make more activities that are accessible right at school where the kids are at? Can we continue that in the middle school? And can we take it and make sure that we're increasing participation at the high school level as well? If we're able to do more activities at our schools, then we know that we're going to take away some of the barriers. Maybe not all of the barriers, but some of the barriers for families. Just because it's going to be inflow in their lives, right at their schools. Transportation will be, will be supported. And then the costs of doing things will be much more minimal compared to some of the outside organizations that we see now. Go ahead and go next, please. You're doing a fabulous job, by the way. Thank you. So one of the things that we kicked off this year is we got a donation from the VP Legacy Foundation. It was a donation that the board accepted earlier this year. And so we had conversations about, you know, what are, what are some ways that we can help schools get kids more active with extracurriculars? And so what our leadership team decided was that we would basically give every elementary school $5,000. And they would be able to have the opportunity to make some choices about what it is that they think that their kids need, particularly kids that don't get the opportunity to participate in outside organizations. And we've taken some, some polling of kids that participate in these programs this year. And at least the last time I checked, it was over 50% of the kids that are participating in some of these activities this year, report that they don't do any other type of activity outside of school. So this is kind of their opportunity to be involved with a, with a team or a group. So that, that word cloud up there is just some of the things that our elementary schools have done. We've had 52 clubs that we've funded through that fund at the elementary school level. And schools have really had the opportunity to be able to choose things that they feel like are important at their school to help more kids get involved. So we're excited to see where that ends up. I mean, that's about halfway through the year. And we've got more schools that, you know, will be accessing those funds as we finish out through this full year. Go ahead and go to the next slide if you would. One of the other things, and this is kind of an on-ramp opportunity that we'd like to do more of in the future, is since we don't really have any or haven't had a lot of like really structured, you know, type of activities in our district at the elementary school level. And research shows that when kids get involved at a younger age, they're more likely to stay with it and, and continue on a path of participating. So this year, we're also bringing back the Healthy Kids Track and Field Program, which is essentially the way we look at it is a wellness program for kids to participate in at the elementary school. We have 17 schools that are going to be participating this year and over a thousand kids that will be participating. And so we partner actually with Tualatin and OHSU on this program. And we're getting some generous sponsorship from Toyota. So again, these are, this is happening through private funds and not general fund, general funds for the Hillsborough School District. We'd like to invite you all to come on June 1st and June 6th. The Hill-Ike Lynn Co-Peters are going to be at Airfield on those days. And June 6th is going to be Liberty Century that is going to be participating at Liberty. And if you've not been to this event before, parents come out of the woodwork and we are going to be providing parents with detailed information about how they can get their kid involved in extracurriculars within Hillsborough. And that information is tailored to their theater area to try to, to try to help and promote that within. Go ahead, next. And then this is something that we're looking at doing this year as well. And that is a scholarship fund. We've got students, like we said, that, you know, never get the opportunity to ever engage in something that's outside of school. And so this effort here would again be using, you know, private dollars to be able to give kids that qualify for free or reduced lunch in the Hillsborough School District, like a paid participation fee so that they can help participate in some type of community activity. We know that we won't be able to make every opportunity and every, you know, single, you know, realm of extracurriculars always possible at our school. So this is a way to help get our kids connected to opportunities that are available in our community. Next. So that was a little overview on elementary school. Middle school is, we, we partner with the Zone and Hillsborough Parks and Recreation. And you can see that the cost generally is about $55 on that. But there is a, they do have a scholarship program for kids that need. It gives you a little information about what they offer there. There is a current waitlist with the Zone and HPR. And the reason that is, is that they simply cannot hire enough people to meet the demand for kids that want to be after, that want to participate after school in the Zone. So that is still a challenge for us when it comes down to all extracurricular activities is really getting people to meet the demand that is out there among the community. There's a track program that is also going to be offered. And of course, they've got a variety of clubs. The middle school's got $10,000 in some private funds this year to be able to do some, some clubs. And so they're offering some clubs that they haven't been able to do in the past that haven't been offered by the Zone. And of course, you know, theater, band and choir tend to be, you know, academic classes at the middle school, but also get the opportunity to do performances and, you know, recitals and such after school as well. Next. High school. So this is, talking about high school, you know, we, we currently have a fee that we, that we charge the kids, 200 if it's a sport or 150 for it's for an activity, non-OSAA. We don't charge because we don't really financially support them. And so there's variable costs if you've got a kid in lacrosse or waterfall. That is an organization that's essentially a vital one, C3. And so we're not funding them directly because they're not an OSAA sport or activity. One of the things that I'm always looking for is like, what are the barriers to more kids participating? And I know that we've done some research this year. And it's about somewhere between 200 and 400 is what a kid can expect of fundraises at the high school level when it comes down to participating in an OSAA activity. And a lot of the fundraising, it goes to kind of three main things. It goes towards coach pay because there are some levels of coaches that are not paid by a stipend. And so some of that money ends up going towards helping to pay for some assistant coaches. There's some equipment costs and then some apparel for kids. So that's a little bit about what we realize with fundraising. The clubs at high schools are mostly, are mostly free for kids to engage with. Let's go to the next slide. So this is an interesting graph and I'm almost finished here. I appreciate, you know, your patience. But one of the things that we, you know, really need to do a great job on is working with data in our, in our school district in a variety of ways. And this is an area that I'm getting a lot of help with and really have appreciated several people from our tech department that have been helping us. But this right here is a really telling graphic. This is from OSAA activities just at the high school level. This doesn't include middle school or elementary. But essentially, any of the bars that are above the line, there's an overrepresentation of that racial group within OSAA activities at our high school level. And any of the bars that go below the line, there is, you know, a deficit of kids that are participating in there. And so, you know, by taking a look at this information, you know, we're able to see, you know, where, where we need to focus some needs at and what we can do to try to make it so that everybody is at least at or, at or above the line. And then just for your, you know, interest, which high school activities with the highest percentage of diversity? Boy soccer and then football and then wrestling, girls soccer, track and field. And that's all from the last, last two years. Next, I think this is a, this is almost the last slide here. But one of the things that I want to just expand a little bit on when it comes down to the data is that we're working on a new, using a new tool to be able to really let us compare data like we haven't before. And so I think by the end of the school year, we're going to be able to look at all school levels, all program types disaggregated by race, gender, you know, across all programs, including like annual and season trends and comparing and contrasting anything that we have. And so really excited about that because that will help us and the people that work in extracurriculars, you know, to really be mindful about the strategies that we take and the things that we do to try to engage all of our students in extracurriculars. And the last slide here, I'm pretty sure is just an opportunity to ask any questions. I don't know how much time I have for questions. And that was a very quick, you know, overview of extracurriculars. There's a lot more that, you know, I could talk about, but I think I was given about 15 minutes. And I'm guessing I probably used up 15.
Okay. All good. Board members have any questions?
I just have a question about using the data to set goals and how do you envision doing that for our district?
Yeah, so using the data and setting goals. So the guy that's on your right there is helping, you know, lead that for the new strategic plan that we have. So I will be part of a group of people, you know, that set goals when it comes down to extracurriculars. But I can tell you that, you know, we, our Latinx community is, of kids is not nearly involved enough. And so that will be something that I think we'll focus on. And then we also have a discrepancy when it comes down to gender. You know, gender should be much closer than it is overall. So I think those will be two, those will be two areas that we'll definitely focus on.
I have two questions. Well, one, one question, one answer. Question number one is, are we engaging with the Latinx community to ask why? Because that discrepancy is overwhelming. So I just want to make sure that we are going to them to ask the question, why? And then maybe like really find out why that matters.
As part of our strategic kind of process, what we heard was that the community is loud and clear on representation in academics, career pathways and extracurriculars. So we've been looking, like Ryan said, at the, those who are represented and not in extracurriculars. And then each one of our longitudinal goals, we'll have a leadership team. They go back to the community and says, why? And then what are the change ideas that can create the gap and put it in there? So we'll set a target four years out for our strategic plan. And then we use collaboration strategies to figure out partnerships, how to increase participation. And then eventually close those demographic gaps. So that we have people representation to our.
And the last thing I wanted to say was as a parent of a non-OSAA sport, which just blows my mind, whatever you can do to help us fundraise to support that effort would be greatly appreciated. In fact, your numbers of 200 to 400 are old. It's about $500 now for lacrosse. And we know that there are people who are about to play and we can't afford to play. It's, it's a little disappointing. I don't know what else to help. I don't know what other help we can give. I don't know if I need to pull the sign outside of somebody's office and pick it, that kind of thing. But there, there's got to be some movement made on some of these other sports. So.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm well aware that the cost can be more than 200 to 400. The 200 to 400, I probably didn't explain very well, but that was, that was for the OSAA adopted ones. The ones that aren't OSAA are going to be largely much, much higher than that.
My final question, I lie, I have three. Is there any way to use some of that funding for transportation?
Funding for transportation?
For those activities?
I don't know, I know some people, but not sure. I'm not sure that I can come up with it, but that's, you know, we've been looking to.
Issue with transportation is our staffing at the moment. It's not, do we have dollars to pay for drivers? It's do we have drivers? Okay, right. And so that, that's been our biggest challenge. We, we are in a situation where we're looking to, and we have successfully expanded to supplemental transportation services that we use beyond our own drivers. But even there, even that, there's a priority that we have in terms of getting kids to the regular school activities. So definitely understand the challenge.
We're using a lot of charters this year, you know, in order to get people to places. And I've gotten, I think, very creative and different ways to try to get kids. So yeah, the personnel for drivers, I mean, it really is our biggest issue than financing. But.
Did you get a special license so you could drive a kid there?
I think I'm the first administrator in the Hills, Hillsborough School District's history that is also a bus driver. Kind of, so at least to a, to a small degree, I am.
I appreciate all of your help.
I also did want to say, Brian, I think in the last two, the Black Village PAC and the Latinx PAC, you've gone and done a presentation, but this, maybe kudos to that. We did a thing that's important to actually go to our parents where they feel comfortable and they need to ask for that kind of feedback and create solutions based on their actual, we not our perceived opinion of what they, we think they need, but what they are telling, what they need to remove those barriers. And then I also just also wanted to say like the elementary level, I think it's so great to start playing more. A lot of times we wait until like high school where everything's, you know, really exciting and people want to get involved, but getting earlier in the elementary level, I know it's harder. And a lot of our schools that are title ones or schools that, you know, unfortunately have parents that work two jobs that can't volunteer to create these public activities. Those kids in those schools are not having those opportunities available. So I know that every elementary school is receiving, you know, five kids. But I wonder for us thinking about how do we make it more equitable for those schools that need actually more support? Is if everybody's receiving the same, we're still going to be at the same deficit. So it was my.
I could just say a few words about the work that Ryan's been doing. So when, when he shows that data there, that's data that he's gathered that is driving the work, actually. So I guess I'm saying, don't shoot the messenger regarding the data. And that's data that he's pulled that is really charting the course for the next work that has to be done. The, the notion of starting with each elementary school getting something really is just a starting point. The data will be, I guess, the, not the data, the resources will be allocated with an equity lens in mind. I mean, as we move forward, but remember, we're going from nothing to, to, I, I really believe if there's a person in Hillsborough that can beat this, every kid, every year, group, club, team, Ryan's connections and partnerships and it's hard for this really is going to get us toward that. So thank you for, it's, I mean, we're, we're just 18 weeks into this. So it'll get better and better. Thank you.
So I understand all of this was put together with having a donation from the VP Legacy Foundation. So how does this look moving forward years? I mean, if it's by donation and this program's tenuous from year to year, do we have a plan sustainability?
Yeah, I, you know, the, the donations is for some years beyond, you know, three or four years. I don't know. I mean, that'll be a conversation that we'll have to have, you know, about that when the time comes. It's always hard, I feel like, trying to look that far in advance because we never know what is happening out there with general fund dollars or what resources that we have. But we know that we can do this for the next several years. And I think, you know, given the, the impact of the pandemic on kids, that if that ends up being all that we can do, then at least that's something during a time when I think it's needed, you know, more than ever. And of course, my hope is that we could build, you know, a system of extracurriculars that, like I said, is vertical from elementary, middle school to high school. And that can be supported so it's a guarantee, like a kid, you know, is guaranteed to be able to get reading instruction from year to year to year.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just one thing to add to that. So if you look at, is it, is it 500 a year? Yeah, so we're currently putting 500,000 a year into this. And as we go into our next couple of budget cycles with the, with the understanding that, that that money may drop off, this will be something that we'll have to talk about every year moving forward. Because if, I mean, I, I really believe that we're going to see great things. We're going to have more kids participating than ever. And for that to drop off would be a shame. So I do think we're going to, if we're serious about every kid, every year, then we are going to have to find a way to find this.
Well, I think if it's funded for a few years, they're going to have really good data to show what the effects of having kids involved does.
It's one of those magic bullet items, right? Like we know the graduation rates improve. It's not great to prove for kids in extracurriculars. It's like one of those like all the magic correlations that we know just where, right?
Yeah, that's why, along with other things like third grade reading, ninth grade on track and grad degree, as we've highlighted, the extracurricular, especially looking at the data and the disparity. As we've highlighted, that is one of those that will bring forward to the board with our strategic plan. Because of the input from the community, we get the data so stark. And because we know it's a strategy that can increase academic achievement and graduation rates, then it makes a lot of sense. My concern is what the group's talking about, which is the sustainability of a strategy that's somewhat outside of our school day. And so we're creating a system where we're putting, like our data system now can show you if you're in chess club or Battle of the Books or soccer, we now track that in our student information system. So we can look at this student was involved in this and this and their reading scores have gotten better and they graduated, that would be a big celebration. That said, there's going to have to be an investment in that into the future, something that's self-sustaining in order to sustain extracurriculars and something in those books.
Yeah, just, I mean, even anecdotal, just that, not every day is the best day to be a kid at school. But if you have that thing that, you know, we love, sometimes that's the reason they have a better one, so. Right? So my, my kids were banned kids from the fifth grade on. My daughter played basketball from the fifth grade on. They both, and that track, that if we can go in June 1st and June 6th, I highly recommend that. That track need is so great. If all my kids did that, it would be awesome.
92% of our kids that have been serving so far this year have been asked a question about whether they're more excited to come to school on days that they have something after school. And that's what, that's the, the response is that yes, you know? And that's like 92% of them saying that. So I know it really, you know, can make a great, you know, difference in a kid's connection with school.
And on the funding side, I will just a quick shout out to our legislative colleagues. I doubt it's going anywhere in this budget climate, but House Bill 2750 had been put forward. That would waive all activity fees. And the legislature would find money in the budget separately and generalize to do that. So, you know, I think our legislators understand the importance of it and hopefully, in my experience, short experience with school board and legislature, a lot of the ideas that eventually pass come from seeds planted section before. So hopefully this seed. That eventually pass come from seeds planted sections before. So hopefully the seeds planted and then your future will see um fruition. Any other questions? I should be able to sell them.
And I just want to say to the board members, um if you uh would like to wear a uh extracurricular services. Um gear um that could be made available to you through Rose over there. So you can uh connect with Rose and I would love to see you uh rock some of that gear to help support extracurricular services.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your time, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great luck.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah.
All right. Our next presenter is Francesca with an update on our Equity, Social, Emotional Learning.
Are you okay to hear Watson if I present from right here or do you need us to?
No, you, yeah, it's fine.
Cause we're loud. So we're good with projecting.
All right.
Okay. So um just wanna thank everybody for giving us this time today to be able to talk a little bit. About what we've been doing with equity and social emotional learning with school district this year. Um it's a partnership. It's a collaboration. When I introduce the team, it's our team. And it's all of us working together, so it's not anybody in isolation. But these are the. Some of the people who are helping us, the dynamic and glittery friends of of us. That are here to share with you what we've been doing um with our community, with our staff and with our students. And so if we go to the next slide. I will let the ladies introduce themselves and then I'll quickly introduce who isn't here, but who was actively a part of the um concentrating team.
Hi, everyone. I'm Yesica Hartamet Gado, and I'm the Equity, Access and Engagement TOSA. I support preschool, twelfth grade and department.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Alicia. Ben Hakes, forgot her name. Uh and I am the secondary Universal Support TOSA, supporting social emotional learning in our secondary school.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Williams, and I am the other half of the Alicia. So I support Universal Support Social Emotional Learning in elementary. She's eight or six.
And a few others that aren't here with us today, but they're pictured on here. Thoreya Lopez is our counselor on special assignment, who is um in charge of our family engagement. Um she works very closely with Olga Kuniya, which all of you know. Alman Hernandez, who is a super tech who works with our extended programs in mental health um projects that we have through O D E. David Steinhauer, who is our liaison specifically working with students who identify as black or uh mixed race with black. Um included in their mixed race. Um and also Stephanie Moreno, who is our assistant. Um and helps us with all the logistical stuff. Okay, next slide.
So tonight's agenda, we'll focus on the objectives um of our phase three equity work, sustainable integration. And we'll have a reminder of this castle competencies. We'll be connecting the cell equity and work um employability skills. Classroom and schools, community and caregivers, and then at the end we'll be bringing it all together.
So let's just go with the next slide and trip down memory lane. So in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, actually before then, the former board and some of you were on it. Had made an intentional focus to create a position where somebody would be able to be in as the um equity officer for the school district. And would be able to come on board. It was a value as it always has been for our school district. We ran into some budgetary um issues with Biennium. And so in twenty twenty, I was asked to come along as halftime executive director of schools and halftime working in partnership with um Sayed and Giddy. In year one, our real focus was on foundations, connections and support and really ensuring that all of our. Um staff, all of the adults in the system really knew what it meant when we were talking about equity. From that in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we started looking at it. That was yet last year with the first year um. Where the um this group is working in partnership with O S P, but where I was in the position. And we really focused on belonging and making connections and support. And from that, um we had two additional members that joined the team at the time, and that was uh Yesica and Zaleesia. And then this year, year three, we're really talking about sustainable integration. How does equity? Transform our social emotional learning? How can social emotional learning work as a lever for equity? And so in this third year and with one of our rocks or one of our key elements that we're focusing on is climate, culture and voice. So it's the combination of equity and social emotional learning, working as that lever of how we're gonna move our work forward. In year four and five, we will continue to transform ourselves, knowing that in year five, our cell standards will be adopted and expected to be in place. Within our schools um according to Oregon Department of Education.
So just drawing your attention again to the castle wheel, this framework um unites our classrooms, our schools, our families and our caregivers. In supporting the growth of the sub competencies in our with our students. So, yeah.
So as we think about. So as we think about cell as a lever for equity, diversity, inclusion and excellence, just wanna um highlight these points for all of us. S E L is relevant for all students and all schools and affirms diverse cultures and backgrounds. S E L is a strategy for systemic improvement, not just an intervention for at-risk students. S E L is a way to uplift student voice and promote agency and civic engagement. S E L supports adults in strengthening practices that promotes equity. And districts must engage our students, our families and our communities. As authentic partners in social and emotional development. And there again, we have the framework to simply reiterate. That this work involves all of us and it allows all of us to work in tandem and in partnership to move equity and social emotional learning forward.
So in this slide, what you'll see is how um equity lives and the five self competencies that we want our students to develop. Um for self awareness, that is affirming intersectionality and recognizing the cultural assets. For social awareness, recognizes inequitable practices in society. For responsible decision making, that's pursuing inclusive solutions for social conflicts. Self-management uses positive asset-based skills to navigate, confront and or challenge. Acculturation of stress, prejudice and discrimination. And then with the relationship skills, that relates and finds commonality with the outset of individual culture and governance.
And so I threw in this um slide of, and I hope I'm pronouncing his name right, it's pronounced. Uh Cuban gnome. And he was here last month and he came and talked to us. Um and he was telling us about his apprenticeship with um. Working her team with C C P and C T E. And so while he was presenting, I was taking down some quotes that he was saying. One of the quotes he mentioned was, I am able to be there at a manufacturing site and I get to um learn alongside those in the field. That's social awareness. I really um had to learn how to be organized and manage my time. At one point, he was talking about how he has to figure it out in order. To be able to go and do his apprenticeship. That's self-management and responsible decision making. At another point, he said, I really like manufacturing and I'm thinking about doing this in the future. That's self-awareness, responsible decision making. He's using what he knows about himself and what he knows to be their strengths. And applying responsible decisions by taking on this apprenticeship. My parents are so proud of me. They brag about me all the time. It's embarrassing and cool. I don't know if he said I'm cool. I added the. At that point, I was just like, yes, but that's self and social awareness. He knows how his his mom and his um his parents are being able to be. Um proud of him and he's learning how to utilize that to navigate the conversation. And he's learning a lot about himself and how he can be aware. And so when we talk about work employability skills and when we talk about how. What is this S E L, social emotional learning? It is applicable in the work employability schools that we skills that we want our students to have. When they walk across the stage and they graduate. We want them to be able to have that. If they have those five competencies ready. Through the lens of equity where they're looking at equities, they're looking at disparities, they're looking at the barriers. That they now have civic duty and the skills to act upon, then we are preparing them for work life after school.
Um, okay, so Francesca helped us kind of walked us through our journey, right? Um. In year one, we started with our foundations, connection support. That was our 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 work around building capacity with our staff. But now in phase three or year three, what we're doing is integration. And so. When you're looking at the castle framework, those first two wheels, classroom and schools. Um in our classrooms, what we're doing is we're using a variety of um. Uh classroom-based approaches like explicit self-instruction. Uh so we see that like in our morning meeting in primary and um advisory and secondary. And what we're also doing is supporting our teachers and how do we uh develop the five self competencies for our students? So. How are we also um ensuring belonging within our buildings and um. And like in our wellness rooms, and how are how are we providing them the supports that they need to foster the development of those competencies? With our schools, um it's all about ensuring a a school climate and culture rooted in belonging. So we have climate and culture teams. Uh we have equity teams and we have them coming together in clarity to talk about. What what they're noticing in their building and how can they make changes and um improvements for for students and staff. We are also ensuring affinity spaces. Um we have that for our licensed staff and for our classified staff. Uh and administrators, actually. And we also have a family engagement team. Um and then for our students, I forgot to mention, we have in every school, we have a B S U, a Black Student Union, we have L Y P, Let's Get a Youth Program. We have Chicas, we have A P I for Asian Pacific Islander. We have the Native American, American, um Alaskan native groups. And I consider it roses and champions. So we have these groups where we provide the space and opportunity for our students to come together and community. And have the space to talk about their school experience. Um and so we know that by infusing equity and cell in all of the parts of our students' education experience, we are promoting. Um those positive outcomes for them.
And before we go to the next slide, we could go back. I just wanna take a moment to dig into the framework. We talk a lot about the competencies, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, responsible decision-making and relationship skills. How some of the powerful space that we're living in, even in this moment. Is reiterated in this framework. We talk about what happens in the classroom. That localized space. Then we start to talk about that overall school climate and culture. Then families and caregivers and then communities. And basically what this does, it it reminds us that this work is incumbent on all of us. To participate in. We don't get to just say it's in the classroom. Or why didn't they do it? We all get to partake in this work. And so that's why we see these. Powerful layers that invite us all to work in partnership, authentic partnerships. So with the next slide. As we think about cell as a lever for lever for equity and action, what does this look like? Right? One of the things that we said and we have this stores and we collaborate, how do we take this off of the paper? Off of the script so that it it manifests in real tangible application and experience for our students and our families. So here. We have our first Asian Pacific Islander uh family engagement night. Here, this is um. Took to Rinton, Seattle, where we took uh about seventy, eighty, seventy-eight. Um African-American, black, identifying black, biracial students to Rinton, Seattle for the Black College Expo. Here we have our pride festival, proud to be H S D. Here we have family engagement night. S E L where we're onboarding this work with families and inviting them to participate in activities. And here it lives in the classroom. And we put this here because it actually manifests in real objectives and goals. Where we want our students to understand, we're not just playing games, we're not being warm and fuzzy. We're providing access and pathways and helping to develop and cultivate skills that will help us fly in employability. Fly in life, fly in our relationship. And so this is a bit about how we're lifting it in real tangible ways, equity and action. And those were the chief for the classroom and for the school.
So as we move further out in this wheel, um we here in H S D are building. Um strong partnerships with our families and communities. And we're doing that in so that our students are having all the support from all the different locations that they navigate each day. In order to have the support to be building the um five competencies and those skills in each of those competence competency areas. Um we're doing that by um working together and. Sorry, striving to align S E L and equity across. Our classrooms, schools, families and communities. And we're doing that. Through the work of um our family engagement groups and with our community partnerships. And some of the things that we're working with with family engagement, our family engagement nights. PAX tool um kits, which is an education for parents and mirrors the PAX um. The behavior game that we use in the classrooms. Uh we have PAX meetings and other family engagement opportunities. And then some of our partnerships, our community partnerships that we're working with are Washington County um. O S A, O D E, Cell for Oregon. So we have quite a great um. We wealth of resources that we are um bonding with and building community with to support our students in H S.
And simply because the work just continues to go on and on, we had to share some more of our pictures. And how we are really using this work to impact student experiences. Uh here in December, our Black Family Village had a meeting at the library. Uh which neighbors us and we were able to read with students, bring families together in community. Really activating and leaning into that part of the 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 circle, the framework that says uh that talks about family engagement. Here we have, this is our, oh, Lunar New Year. This is Lunar New Year, just. Uh a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, powerful event, wonderful opportunity to lean into the community. Um maybe a title draw, title, the title draw. Yeah, yeah. Here we have partnerships with P S U of training leaders and tapping into leadership capacity. This was a grade level meeting over at Liberty High School. Where uh one of our deans leaning into um onboarding, talk around equity, how do we create community? How do we make sure that we have a culture of a community where all of our students don't sense that they belong, but they know that they belong. And so. Just inviting our students uh to lean into that wealth of knowledge. And just to offer up some raw numbers for you, if you go back to the last slide. Um in the last two and a half months, starting in mid-December until about a week and a half ago, our cell events, we've had three and over three hundred um. Community members have come and been in attendance with them. Initially, when we started out, we're like, I, oh. Twenty, maybe one per school. We'll hit forty. And the first one, we were so packed, we had a blackout. Um. That was fine. We we navigated. If um we look at our um the students who with our um. Uh the students that went to the Black Student Expo, we were hoping maybe a bus. We ended up having to get a second bus and it was close to eighty students that wanted to come. Um most recently, and I'll let Alicia share about the Black History Night that's this Friday. So on this Friday. I want to come out, it's gonna be a ball. Um I should make it a ball of black. Um but this Friday, we're super excited. We're so excited and delighted. And I'm honestly, I'm privileged. By this, that we get to celebrate in community and commemorate um the the contributions of all of our brothers and sisters. That are decorated in melody. And so this Friday. We thought we were gonna be a hidden creek community, but the community said, it's not bigger than. The community said, go bigger. And so we'll be at Liberty High School because. The first week, I think we had maybe a hundred forty.
In four days.
Hundred and four days um registrants. And we didn't wanna close, like we we were gonna have this. We had it planned out. We had it planned out. But again, the community spoke. And when the community speaks, and when students speak. That's transformation power. And so they transformed our whole plan. And so now we come back home and not in Hidden Creek, we get to go to Liberty High School. We will assemble at six o'clock. We will come together in in fellowship and in community. We will go into the auditorium for. A speaker, a keynote speaker. Our Black Student Union uh members will be there to support. This is also partnership with our Black Family Village. And last we checked, our numbers were around two seven, two seventy? Two hundred and seventy of our family, students and community members who wanted to come together. And just assemble and celebrate this moment. And so we're excited to be um to be able to to to. And so we're excited to be um, to be able to, to, to lean into that work and to partner with all of you and look forward to seeing you available.
The two other ones that I want to talk about is our Latino PAC, we just had our meeting the other day, and they have consistently stayed at around seventy online the entire time. I usually have to log off at about eight, ten and be like, I have, I gotta get off, and they're still going, and they're still going. And they ask the most poignant questions that I wish everybody could just get a glimpse at what they are asking. Because I think there's biases and assumptions that show up with people who maybe have diverse language skills that perhaps maybe they don't have something to um as eloquent to offer. And let me tell you, the first say that's not the truth. I mean, our Latino population out there is coming, they're coming in robes, and they, they want their voice to be heard. They also, so consistently you see them at that, and also our Native American PAC are getting their roots um up and running, and we're seeing um, we have one event, and it was, you know, the first time we had brought everybody back together in person in quite a few years. Great turnout, um and we had, we used that as an opportunity for us to see what the community wanted. Was it about building community, or was it about building up the power of advocacy within um, within their group? And so it's, we're at the beginning points, this is basically two point five years of us working as a team. As we bring on Jennifer, we bring on the others that have come along to really br- bring together the vision of equity, the vision of um social-emotional learning to debunk the thought that social-emotional learning is just this warm, buzzy stuff where we all just love and hug. Which are great, unless, don't, anybody warning, don't go hug my feet. But if you need a hug for the others, we're happy to play. But it's not that, it's, it's not that, it's so much more than what we can provide for our students. And so whether it's through morning meeting, whether it's through a wellness center that we have in multiple schools, whether it's in our student groups who are coming to us and are saying, we need representation and we need our voice to be heard, we try to provide that for them. So how does this all come together? Do you want to get a little history about, you can get a little history about your videos?
Oh, yeah. So we had this amazing opportunity, as I joined the team this fall, um there was this movement starting to happen, and it was creating a video that features students and staff in, in Hillsborough School District. And each video represents one of the council councils. And so um one of our techitosis has really taken this on, and each one just becomes more powerful. And so we'd like to share the one on um social awareness with you and just let you see the magic.
And I would be remiss, because I have been a poor thought right now of talking about our students who identify with maybe homelessness or disabilities. Those are also included, I just did not cover that today because I know that our student services, when they get an opportunity to talk, will, but know that that's in the forefront of their life.
Throughout this school year, everyone in the Hillsborough School District has the opportunity to participate in social-emotional learning, commonly referred to as ELL.
We will do this with intentional teaching and learning of five core competencies or big learning areas.
I'm just gonna warn you, there probably will not be a dry eye.
Throughout this school year, everyone in the Hillsborough School District has the opportunity to participate in social-emotional learning, commonly referred to as ELL.
We will do this with intentional teaching and learning of five core competencies or big learning areas.
Adult consciencia. Soft words. How to
Self-management.
Conciencia social.
Social awareness.
Destrezas relacionales.
Estrellas leñosenales.
Relationship skills.
Toma de decisiones responsables.
Responsible decision making.
In November, our focus is social awareness. Social awareness is the ability to understand a perspective of others and empathize with them, including those from diverse backgrounds, cultures, and continents.
This includes the capacities to feel compassion for others, to understand the various reasons we behave differently in situations, and to recognize family, school, and community resources and supports.
This is about how we understand the world around us.
The world around us.
This is how we understand that there are different ways of thinking.
It's about how we empathize with others.
Show concern for others and recognize strength in others, including those from diverse backgrounds, cultures, and continents.
Es como identificamos problemas en nuestra comunidad y en el mundo. Y como trabajamos individualmente y juntos para responder a esos problemas.
Social awareness is a skill that helps you learn to connect your own perspective with the perspective of others.
Um, a Socratic seminar is uh, maybe it could be an assignment that we have in the classroom, um or even a club, or it could really be anything. Um, we sit around in a circle or around a table, and we talk about our opinions, um we talk about peer reviews, we make arguments, we agree, we disagree, we change minds.
Another skill in Socratic seminar that you learn is the idea of putting yourself in like another person's shoes. You learn more, like, I think empathy is the one. You learn, you get to practice empathy instead of like being sympathetic for someone.
Sometimes our perspectives are all the same. That's okay.
I see a woman.
I see a frog.
I see a horse.
Super.
I see a frog.
Oh, I see a frog too.
Sometimes all perspectives all different. That's okay too.
I see a horse.
I see a frog.
Um, based on the perspective.
I see a frog.
What else could this be?
I see a horse.
I just see a horse.
Oh, there's a horse right here. You can see a horse. This one, you can see person.
Yeah, I see a horse.
Stand away from you.
Yeah, I also see a person.
This November has been a great month to learn about social awareness. People across America voted in elections on November eighth. Public officials who represent different beliefs and perspectives were elected to serve their communities. Social awareness helps us to understand the importance of elections and why people express strong feelings about what they believe in and take actions to support their feelings.
While voting is one example of social awareness, we also express social awareness when we find ways to show compassion and empathy for others in the local community.
Many of you are doing this right, right now. Through toy and kind of food drives, volunteering in shelters, and finding ways to meet needs of others.
Our goal in HSD is to make sure we all know we belong. We may come from different places, cultures, and backgrounds, but we get to live in the HSD community together.
How to be HSD.
Quickly too, and I um, I didn't even update the slides, but one of the other big jobs that we do um as a team is help to train and working with Casey, our SROs. And so we at LEAF accomplished, uh, almost there, we're at about twenty-four hours of training that we have provided for our SROs on any family engagement, uh, restorative practices, equity, social-emotional learning. Um, and had the wonderful opportunity of working them, with them, most recently within a, within a restorative circle. Um, and it, it has just been a pleasure, and it has never, it hasn't always been easy. Um, but it has been um something that we co-created together, and we've been able to learn as much as they have learned from us, we have learned from them. So it has been, thank you for that honor and that pleasure of us working with them. Since it is Valentine's Day, and it is. Happy birthday to Oregon, we have some M and M candies that were personalized, no, they were not bought on district money. Please want to leave it with, it has our little logo, and it has um, just a little treat for you to go. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
Yes, there are other videos, right? There's like something, there's
There's one for every one of the five.
I think there are three of all.
Oh, no. Yeah, Lisa had asked, they, they're, they are on a, on a website, of all the YouTube videos. We're in round two, and in round two, we're gonna look at other people that we have not hit yet. Um, and other constituents that we haven't had the but we will get those in a board update for you so that you can see the rest of them. We have one that we just finished creating for Black History um event on Friday, haven't even viewed it yet, but I'll put that in the Monday notes if you guys don't have a chance to come and see.
And then your presentation in your packet, if you put down the Frank's page.
Yeah, but there are other ones, and they're listed, so you can't like find it yourself. I got to use technology.
Before the ladies leave for the evening, are there any other questions?
I, I just want to say thank you for your presentation. I don't think there's any organization that exists in our community that is doing multicultural community building. So this is like something that our district has just taken on because there is the need. And something that I feel like five years ago, thinking about Fran, Fran, your position, and like, this is like, this is like our dream, like, one day we would have to be here. There's still a lot of work to do, there's still like a lot of things that we want to accomplish, but just to still be here and see this come to a reality is like super broad mind. And especially, I think it was really hard when we were doing the listening sessions and talking about like the SRO program, discussing that and negotiating on behalf of our community, our students and our families, and saying, we need these things in order for it to work for us. And now hearing like that training and how that all has come together, it's just like really amazing. Good job.
Other questions?
I was just gonna say, thank you for mentioning that about the SROs, and there was recently a situation where, and Fran alluded to it a little bit, um, when she talked about the restorative circle with SROs. But that was really to provide the emotional support after a tragic event. And this team here supported them, and it, I mean, it's amazing just to hear about it. The other thing I would say is you, if you ever have the opportunity to have lunch with these folks, um, it's traumatizing. I thought I was just sitting down for a place to eat my chicken. Pretty soon, we were old men in a circle and reflecting and talking about folks and dreams. It was scary and awesome, it was. I spent a lot during it.
And then she didn't let go.
Yeah, it's like, well, like, well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is Audrey to cover the record of graduation.
Yeah, I think we all went public on um January twenty-sixth, and it was in your board update, April that Friday. But also just wanted an opportunity to highlight some of the information that came out in that report and just talk about some of the things that are cool. Are um, really, so, go to the next slide. Um, this slide will just show you an overview of our um four components of high schools, um our online school and our district overall. So our graduation rate um this year is up, I'm just using the bottom line there. Last year, we were at eighty-two point six six, and this year, we are at eighty-two point two seven. Um, just um to kind of give you a, you know, look back, back in two thousand and fifteen, when we really started to bring on roles into our high schools really before graduation, we were sitting at a graduation rate of eighty-two point two at the time. And we have really done a lot of work in the last seven, eight years um to improve that rate. And um, just from a mathematical nerd perspective, moving the dial, one percent is a lot of work, and we have done a lot of great things over the last seven years that attribute to my predecessor before me and, and the work of our high school is to really be focused on weekly. Again, another highlight just to notice um on here is our fifth-year cohort computer rate of um the class of twenty-twenty-one. So if you look at the grad rate from twenty-twenty-one, that was eighty-two point six six. We didn't stop working with kids after that year. And I think that is something where, when we talk about our investment in the Pathway Center and what we offer at Oak Street Campus, we don't stop after four years. We find kids, and I think we worked really hard to find those students, bring them back to us. We have kids working in the diploma plus programs, after working them in the evenings, we have kids that are working on GEDs. We find them and we still figure out a way to get them to a pathway, it might not be in four years, but we will get them. So I think that's a huge highlight, like, uh, we should hear. Um, go to the next slide. This just shows you our last four years of um cohort graduation rates from twenty nineteen. So that's twenty nineteen is our pre-pandemic rate, and then again, we're, we're sitting at in twenty-twenty-two of this year. Um, just a reminder, twenty-twenty didn't end in March, March thirteen. A, a way back, way back, way, it feels like a long time ago. Um, if you go to the next slide, this is the focal group comparison, and what we, uh, what we pulled here for, for our reasons, was being able to take a look at is um the, the delineation by groups that have been historically underserved, as well as um just a breakout by, uh, race as well. So kind of, and also, you know, the V3C and federal group names that come on the ODE um report, so that's, we just utilize those same names. It's not the sort of terminology we always use, but just for consistency sake, we wanted to refer to that on there. Um, I think there's some great um highlights in that information and the work that we did around that. Um, we saw a huge jump in our Hispanic Latino group um from seventy-five, fifty-six back up to eighty-two point nine seven. Um, we did a huge jump with our students with disabilities. I think this just goes to the um, again, getting students back in our schools and just really taking um a lot of um our SIR funds and, and the work that we did through summer schools are really support groups to um get back, back to our graduation rates where we have a lot more. So each of the groups are with there. Um, again, if there's less than ten, which is like, which is what occurred in our American Indians, that last data, but we should, there wouldn't be that prior to that. So now, uh, the five largest districts, those are Portland Public, Beaverton, um, Salem, Khyber, Hillsborough, and we'll name them all, five of them. Um, we had the largest growth in our grad, uh, grad rate, so we went up over three percent. Um, and we had the second highest grad rate as well, Denver, Portland, Beaverton. Really, yeah, got ahead of, got ahead of a few others. We have the highest grad rate for our Hispanic and Latino students amongst all, all of those five. Um, and the largest growth for that group as well, and the highest grad rate for students with disabilities, as well as the largest growth. So I think, again, everyone, um, shout out to our high schools, um, and the work that they do um to get students um before they succeed.
Under, uh, the definition of students with disabilities, does that mean they have an IEP?
They have IEP, yes. So just really good. Um, I did want to kind of anchor you to our kids this year right now too, so I had, I should have, that's actually my own child is a current freshman. So just in where they're at in their year. So our current freshmen, last year, as eighth graders, they returned to school. Our current sophomore group, um, as freshmen, they were at return to school last year. In eighth grade, they were distance learning. Our current juniors, so the class of twenty-twenty-four, their sophomore year was the return to school year. Their freshman year was distance learning in high grade. And then our current seniors, their junior year was return to school, their sophomore year was um distance learning in high grade. And their freshman year was a march pledge year, um, with like PAX bands basically at the end of their ninth grade year. So I think just kind of anchoring back to where each grade level has been in, in their trajectory with us and high school is just helpful. As I look at the data, it helps me kind of understand what they have received and where, where, you know, things were challenging for them. And I think what I would say is our current seniors had some challenging times um in their, in their um, uh, high school uh career. So we are doing some work for them, and we still have work to do to help them get across their finish line. Um, but I wanted to show you some data that is connected to that. So if you remember, I talked about summer school earlier, um, like, in, in August, I think, maybe September. And um at the end of eleventh grade, um, our current seniors, thirty-five percent of them were, oh, oh, over thirty-five percent rock track. Um, and as they were going into the start of their twelfth grade year, um, they were at a Um and as they were going into the start of their twelfth grade year, um they were at about thirty-two point four three. That was some work that they had done during the school. Then we had summer school, so if you go to the next slide. This is kind of the summer school impact on on track data and so we were able to get um. Some of those um students back on track and got to basically about um twenty-three percent of our students between tenth and twelfth grade that were still off track. But again, getting it up um and making a huge increase in that work. You go to the next slide. This is ours. You have to think of each of the classes. So our current. Class of twenty twenty-three, that's the first column there. Um that's where they were at as freshmen in their information. Then our class of twenty twenty-four, and that's where they were at as freshmen, again, off track or on track. And then um the class of twenty twenty-five. That's our sophomore group right now. They they're on off track data. And then our current preliminary data of our current freshmen. So really um right now, our freshmen that we have with us, we do a lot of work for our contract um on track data collection around them and really helping them make sure they have the credits that they need to graduate. And those systems are coming, we're getting back into, you know, really supporting students at the high school level to to improve and really gain the credit that they need. So if you pop to the next slide. This shows you so easier to pop, okay, pop backwards one. So this is. So look at the class of twenty twenty-three. As ninth graders, they were at fourteen point nine four percent off track. Upward. Currently, they're sitting at seventeen point eight six percent off track. And remember, this is the group that had the most impact probably to their learning in high school. But we've also made huge gains in that um that that number would actually even worse. Um at the end of their eleventh grade year. And that has come through a huge investment through summer school. The work through our camp, Oak Street Campus and Way Center and really reengaging students. And even within our high schools, the times of access and advisory and getting them the supports they need within the school day along with academic options is really making a difference to. Um get students back on track. We will not, we will not be not doing summer school. Summer school will be a priority again this summer. And again, we will get these students that are on the finish line. And if it's not in their fourth year, it'll be in their fifth year. So. Um gee. Does that, so looking ahead, continuing our work around credit options. Evening programming is um working through Oak Street Campus where we do have. We were from ten to fifteen students coming in the evening um to get their high school diplomas. We are working on a ninth grade reboot right now that will be starting at Oak Street Campus just to help some students that might be a little bit credit deficient to just kind of get back on track. Um again, access and advisory that we talked about, again, giving students opportunities to earn credits. Um and just work with teachers individually. And then again, summer school, we are planning for a very robust summer school as well. I think we need to answer any questions as well. But just a huge shout out to our high school, um for sure. They do a lot of work around this. So. And I'm a little nervous presenting this. As you know, Frank has left it for the Reynolds School District and I have to learn a lot about graduation really quick and I knew a lot. But I definitely have learned a lot more in this last couple of weeks as I have started to support high schools and my my answer will help this all. But I'm happy to answer any question.
Funny.
So for the, for the students who are off track, are there commonalities for them being off track or are there? Things that we can identify that we can back up to say the freshman year and and identify to to prevent those kids from going down that road?
I think there's some things that we identify. I think there's definitely areas um where they they struggle more. Um I think what's been hard with this group is with the pandemic being kind of their middle two years. There's not something super easy to them. They had a a challenging four years of high school. Um what we often do though is persons um that get them off track are typically not persons and playing persons. Um have been um kind of one of the factors and we've been looking to. Support that. I think as we look at our two plus one option, um as we look to the future of math, I think that will allow for students to. Only for themselves towards college or career that could really um be more supportive of their trajectory.
Are you seeing, there's been a follow on, are you seeing then a correlation with the middle school and what they're doing in school, middle school for math that is, it's not speaking or it's not. Whatever the case may be, that's leading them to have issues in high school?
I think there's some pieces that are there. I think that's why um with math and language are at the middle school level, we moved to the seventh period A in order to have connection classes, which are kind of those extra. So students that are struggling in math, do they get an extra math class that really help build up some of their foundational skills that they were. Maybe lacking in or holes that they have in their their knowledge or language or knowledge. So that's, and that had just started in the last two years. So I do think we saw that, which is why we really did shift towards a seventh period A and having connections. Connections class slash support classes for students to build, to build their skills so that they could go and go more successful with a better foundation, especially in those two areas.
But if if you look at the our twelve graders who are off track, that's not a math curriculum issue. That's a lack of credit attainment during COVID. I mean, it just in a nutshell and just having access to the kids and keeping them on track was a real challenge.
Right, yeah, I was looking at the whole thing, not just the our current twelve graders, but the whole standard there. Thank you.
And I would just add too, for five or six years, we've been part of uh investing our high school success money in being a cohort. Uh regionally around ninth grade on track and using research a lot out of Chicago. Where we have ninth grade teachers teaming to make sure that ninth graders are on track and we build a data system. So there are red flags if. Credits and attendance and behavior issues are getting in the way of a kid being on track. We're really deep in that work. So it's been extending from ninth grade to tenth grade, eleventh grade. So we have this whole on track system. Um it's really benefiting our students. We see the results of that even through the pandemic.
I think you can really see those results, right? Because you have the kids back there. We are getting those systems back running in an in-person setting. So if you go back to the. But if the slide that shows our current ninth graders, um that's some of our best on track data that we've ever had in terms of them having the core credits that they need to be on track to graduate. So that is really much, much better too.
Well, it will be maybe not very important to be very extracurricular.
I think I would just ask um if it's possible next time we, and we talk about seven hour minutes. Data, just to have that aligned, but probably be very.
Thank you. Uh.
We should clap for the last.
Uh next thing, next time, just a quick superintendent search update. Rose has been. Much busier than we are. The application deadline is the twenty-seventh. Um so I just know that everything's on track uh going along as expected. Um I would say expect. Our pace to pick up, like the amount of work that we need to do to pick up as that date closes and we have. Um executive session, the. Make our cut lines, all the, all the things we've talked about before. Uh I, the main thing I wanted to ask tonight is sort of gauge the board's interest in. Calendar up here. Um so one of the things we discussed, and and we don't even know if it's entirely possible yet, right? But so. If it's possible. Uh would you rather, that again, in our house, our kids, right? Would you rather? Uh one of the things we added to our calendar was. March twenty-third, is that right? Something in that neighborhood? What's the Tuesday hour in our board meeting?
Twenty-one, twenty-first.
Twenty-first. We had added March twenty-first as an additional meeting to screen the first level of candidates. Um would you rather? Uh we only have one board meeting in March because of spring break and that's just all we do. Would you rather? Structure the March fourteenth board meeting in a weird way and make it really long? Or have that separate meeting? So one of the things the consultants have said they might be able to do is get themselves. Fully prepared before the fourteenth meeting. I guess the applications that have been coming in, those, you know, they're off the way to the end. So if if they can make it happen, would we rather? Uh have the March fourteenth board meeting, start with the executive session, two hours-ish, half and a half-ish. Of discussing how the first cut has been made, what candidates are in, go downstairs, do a. One hour regular session, then come back up here and finish with another executive session, have it all done on the fourteenth? Or would you rather? We can do all the business on the fourteenth and then have a separate meeting on the fourth.
Would our meeting downstairs be short, speed to?
Yes, yeah, uh. Rose and Rose and I looked at like this a little bit, how we could.
Structure again.
Make it so that, yes, it is. We wouldn't have very many reports. We'd probably just cover the action items that require action. In the downstairs.
I think we penciled out about forty minutes.
Yeah. Forty minutes max for the regular. Never, never know it's like uh on the audience side, but. The purpose of that? If they can get there, right? So I guess the the variable that we don't know yet is can they get, can they feel fully prepared by the fourteenth? If they're not, but and we have, we have the meeting set for the twenty-first. It's a, if we can get by the fourteenth, would you rather do that?
Is there a work session in that one as well?
Yeah, the the one, those, yes, the the one, we have only just one meeting. We don't really do a work session, then a regular session.
Right.
So we would essentially, all of the work session time would be dedicated to an executive session on superintendent search. We do our regular session and then as needed, I don't know how long. They had said four hours-ish to discuss the first cut. We were going from. Twenty-five to six to eight, something like that. And like you talked about, we're going to see every single candidate, know why the people who made the cut made the cut. So I think, you know, we have, we have to have a pretty detailed discussion to then figure out, you know, how we. Communicate with our faculty to make our next cut. So um. Yeah, if if I think. They are working towards doing that. Would that be inaccurate? They are working towards being ready for the fourteenth to not have the extra meeting. So it's really our decision that if they can get there, would you rather do that or would you rather just continue to hold out? March twenty-third, that's a separate, just the executive session. Don't think we do that today.
So we're talking about why.
To get more time. Oh, yeah, that would be a so part of it. Right. So you, you can tell. Reduce the time between the closing of the thing, of the filing and communicating with the first cut that they are the first cut. So that it doesn't go almost a month or three and a half weeks or whatever between the time it closes. And they hear, oh, you made the first cut. So try to shrink that time down as well. Um in order to hope all of our. Favorite candidates want to still be in.
Yeah, and I look for, for advocate or screaming one day when it's really great, we can be respectful about it this time and be turned on, fast turn on. If there's a.
Yeah, I think they're working towards, I think that would be their reference too.
I'm gonna look, it's their reference. I do, I'm, I'm sorry, I assume the one around.
Yeah, but.
Um I don't love the idea of meeting and talking about it a little bit, changing gears to do voting on some other stuff and then trying to come back and like keep that flow. Not know if it's possible for us to like. Move our regular session with this much notice to like be done first and early and then just like do it all and like then just legitimately anything.
We're gonna do that. It's just, uh, we just have to post.
Just the audience, yeah, anybody wanting to speak to the board at noon, ready at five fifteen instead of seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. Legally, I have to post it on the, there's a, like I said, there's no difference really, just.
Different time.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody will question if we even are doing it. Because we're doing the thing that the board is, their number one responsibility. So um. I I would be in favor of. Doing the meeting very, very quickly at first. I like Abby, I've been shutting that down and then we form up here and we do the work that has been done.
That it would be held regular session at five fifteen? Oh, yeah.
I think, you know, we don't have places to pretend very often.
I would even, why five fifteen? Even the answer.
Did you get something out? I think, did you ever hand up?
No, I, never mind. Patrick, any thoughts?
Make sure you're.
Yeah, I appreciate it. You know, I'm happy to do it either way. Um makes a lot of sense to do it the way you're suggesting.
All right, so I think the only downside of a five fifteen rate session is that. People who might attend. So. I uh I guess we have one here, but I maybe ensure that our union partners could be ready. To give their report much earlier.
Is it possible?
We do have one here.
Is it possible that we could invite our new union partners to submit their report in right? For this particular one meeting?
I think we do. We can. Think, would it be too much of a burden to be ready earlier?
Oh. Would it be a gift?
Oh, that's five A.
I apologize, I didn't see you coming.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, it feels like the downside could be mitigated. All right, let's look at you. Yeah, just start, post it to five fifteen. Get people that fifteen minutes to get off work or like. That's our home, that's our, that's not changing our home, that's our kind of. Okay.
You might have just given Beth the best birthday present ever too.
Is that your birthday? Oh, you'd be done as soon as we're done, since we come here. Yeah, I think staff will be done when we come and do executive session. Yeah. All right, so uh, does anyone have any questions about the superintendent search? Okay, we're gonna work towards that. Um if if we hear from the consultants between now and then, that they're not likely to be able to make it at the twenty-first, we will try to do that in board update. All right, uh. We have an AR. Does anyone want to say anything about Mike? Be good. That's Audrey.
Um this one actually did go through and we made a slight adjustment to it already, um an operation based on uh the suggestion from Monique. So this is an updating all that.
Uh all right, discussion time. Students like, any like to add to me?
Okay, uh so at Century, it is um book week. And as um as the co-president of my sister Latin music club, we have pulled together a lot of donations for um from local stores. And that helped um sell um food during our lunches. So we made a lot of profit. We're very lucky about that. Um we're working to make sure the profit is put toward events that we're having in May. And so we're reaching out to local businesses. Asking them for donations and speaking as much as possible because this will be hopefully the first um food dance. That will have since COVID. And so um you know, my foster friends are like creeping up, making sure that we, we want to make sure everything's done to a team. We'll make sure this fundraiser goes off. Um as well as we want to. And so we're just really lucky that our somebody is um supporting us and enjoying our food. Yeah, same, I'm like same. Uh our uh Menchana Club has been working on fundraiser on our very first uh Latin X dance. So we're very excited. We just today announced um to uh, you know, social media and. We're working on posters to, you know, advertise and get everyone, you know, not just the Latinx community, but like everyone at our school, just to, you know, come enjoy and. You know, grab a bite and, you know, chill with friends. So I'm really happy about that too.
All right. Superintendent Highline?
Yeah, all I would say is that, you know, oftentimes if you tune into the news, you hear. All that is supposedly wrong with public education. And if you reflect on the meeting we just had tonight, I think you heard probably the greater truth about public education and that's so many of the things that are going right. Um tonight we had um presentations on the, the work that's been done to provide extracurricular opportunities for kids. We had a presentation on the equity in the SEL work that's been done. Then we had a presentation on our improving graduation rates. And um. And I think that's the real work that's being done in public schools that people don't see or maybe not as newsworthy because it's not as catchy or not as. You know, it doesn't provide a division when we report on those kind of things. But we feel proud and thankful to have a team and just a staff, maybe. But we feel really proud and thankful to have a team and, uh, just have staff members across the district that do this work for all the right reasons. Thank you.
All right, board director time, Patrick, any you want to share tonight?
Uh, just, uh, just briefly, two things. Uh, first of all, um, I really appreciated the, um, presentation on social emotional learning. Um, I, uh, sometime I like to talk to people in our community from a variety of backgrounds about the good work our, our schools are doing. And once in a while, I'll, um, I'll talk to someone who says, well, I'm not, I'm not so sure about social emotional learning type things. Does that take away from core curricular subjects? Um, and I always like to explain that, no, it doesn't. It makes the, it makes our students better able to accomplish those core curricular, um, subjects. And not everyone has the same degree of support at home, uh, to learn self-regulation and, um, those important components of social and emotional health. So I think that our, I was really glad to hear that our educators are doing such great work there. So thanks them for that presentation. Um, and then the second thing is, uh, just wanted to share that after a lot of thought, I've really enjoyed the past year on the board with all of you. And so I've decided I'll be putting my name forward to continue on, um, in the election that's coming up. So, um, it's, it's a great pleasure to serve with all of you, and thanks for all you're doing.
You. Eric, Eric.
Uh, I was gonna say, did you guys need any chaperones for that?
No.
Um, uh, but now I just also just thank you for all the great presentations we've had. And Happy Valentine's Day.
Um, all right, uh, so it's my turn. Um, I guess, uh, I agree with our, you know, about being off in here of public education being, um, reflective on publicly and learning. But in fact, the reality is a little bit different, and so I like, um, that we shut that right in our meetings and things. That was, that was enjoyable. Um, similar to what Patrick shared, uh, position five, the school board seat that I've occupied for the last eight years is also going to be up for election on our Mesa's team here pretty soon. Um, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about what a joy it has been to serve our community. Um, the fourth and best largest school that we've been standing for in the last eight years. But I, I have decided not to see reelection that's been very excited to support my friend that Padilla, who's here this evening. She will be sleeping that seat, and I hope that you all will be, um, in, uh, enthusiastically supporting her, and thank you very much for that. That's all.
You.
Yeah, I don't have anything tonight except to say Happy Valentine's Day to everyone and, uh, have a good rest of your week.
Nancy, the chair.
Um, excuse me, uh, first of all, uh, this week I had the pleasure or the privilege to speak to some local constituents, community members, uh, some who are, uh, running for office and others who just wanted to hear what we're saying. And so all I did, um, trying to represent Erica and, and Mark was in motion as well. So we were able to meet the downstairs, thank you, Beth, and like. Um, so that was always, it's always nice to talk to people and share with them our circumstances for being on board and how we got there. And we were like campaigning and fun stuff like that. So we did that this week, that was awesome. Uh, thanks to Yvette Alonso Garcia for making my move. I had the privilege and the honor of submitting her recommendation for the Coolidge Scholars. And I've got to tell you, it's been a long time since I got that excited during the writing. And I was like, and I, I wish her the best. But what it did was, as I was writing it, I thought about this board, I thought about the people who've come before us. I thought about Mike, I thought about everything. And it just, it just really made me feel good. I don't get to any moments like that. So thank you, Yvette, and best wishes to you.
Thank you. All right, not much to add. We're pretty much, I'll say Happy Birthday Oregon, so.
Okay.
Um, little reminder that it was in hot news, if you all saw that, it's play season. So hopefully I will see many of you out at, uh, place taking place or a couple of overlapping schedules, but hopefully I'll be able to get to, to buy my name as I can. Um, we'll see you out there, and our next meeting will be February twenty eighth. Your turn.